Approving Board of County Council's planning and commissioning request for a refund of $25,000 five months paid on October 11th, 2015 to appeal cover TZPA 15-014. Support.
Motion to second, any discussion?
Just change that to August instead of October.
Yeah, October.
Uh, he said.
He said October.
Okay.
Did I say?
He said October.
You're just getting ahead of yourself.
Okay, all. Nothing further, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Don't care.
Okay. Motion to consider approving PA 116, a recent progress by the KJAC for a property located in Hazleton Township parcel number 78-004-11-400-002. Support.
Motion to second, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Don't care.
That is my report, thank you.
I move to county finance and administration. Commissioner Schneider.
I move to consider authorizing the board to hire a superintendent of buildings and grounds to fill a vacancy due to a resignation at pay grade grade eight on the rise salary schedule with a salary range of $38,074 through $46,582.
Support. Motion to second, any discussion on that motion?
We've been really messed up, we did a lot of dirty things, a lot of in-house stuff that we would have to contract out if we didn't do it, and we talked to the places.
We asked the applications for the.
Also, I'd like to say there's what, 12 or 14 applications? And I believe myself in German Howie will start going through them. We're gonna set up some interviews next week and read it down to three to five, whatever this board would like, and then we will bring the applicants to you gentlemen, and seven of us can approve who we want to hire.
Anything?
Are they acceptable to everyone? So, there's 12 or 14? I believe so.
Can we go, can we go five at least?
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever you have.
Yeah.
Whatever you have.
Yes. Four, five, six, I mean, if you've got six really good, don't you kind of feel that is in the job? Right. Might be seven, might be five, I mean, you know, whatever. There's some policy issues.
Alright, anything further? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Don't care.
Move to consider authorizing sheriff's office to hire a corrections officer to fill a vacancy at the Teamsters non-supervisory corrections officer range of $38,014 to $42,717.
Support. Motion to second, any discussion on that motion? Right now, the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Don't care.
Move to consider authorizing the health department to hire an emergency preparedness intern for up to 20 hours per week at $12 per hour with no fringe benefits except those required by law for the period of October 1st, 2015 through June 30, 2016.
Support. Have a motion on the second, do we have any discussion?
I was just, Larry, do you want to talk to us?
Sure.
Just for a few seconds.
Yeah.
A few seconds. The health department has received an additional allotment of funding from federal government for our emergency preparedness grant, and it's specifically earmarked for infectious disease and Ebola-related activities. And to use it, we looked at either doing, you know, exercises or public health programming. We feel we could better use it if we use the public health programming and made it less on the exercise side. It is use it or lose it money. We don't accept it, we've got to send it back, so I thought we could spend it in Chiwasi County or Detroit or here. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Right now, the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Don't care.
Motion to consider authorizing probate court to hire a youth center director to fill a vacancy due to a resignation at pay grade nine on the rise salary schedule with a salary range of $41,527 through $50,805.
Support. Motion to second, discussion on motion? Right now, the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Don't care.
Motion to consider authorizing the Veterans Affairs and Services Office to hire a part-time travel coordinator to fill a vacancy due to a resignation at $19 hours per week with no fringe benefits except those required by law at a pay grade two on the rise salary schedule with an hourly rate of $10.98 through $13.44.
Support. Motion to second, any discussion on that motion?
Even though I've made the motion, is, I do have concerns, just like, you know, last time when a trial coordinator was appointed. Without documentation, is, is saying that we need a trial coordinator, I can't honestly support until we see the documentation.
That's fine.
I acknowledge the commissioners' comments, and it's my understanding that our documentation is very thorough and well done, that our office has even asked to come to Saginaw to show our documentation, explain to other VA offices what we do and how we do and how we track and coordinate, and we're kind of the poster child, if you will, of this service, so I commend the office on what they do, and I encourage some support.
Not to, you know, beat a dead horse here, it is, but if it's such good work, why can't I get to see it?
The binders are all upstairs, right in the office. You could literally walk in and grab them if you wanted. The right, the white binder is right to the right. You come in, turn right, right here, and then.
It's in that area.
Alright, all those in favor, motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same?
Aye.
Don't care.
Motion to consider approving the MERS unemployment delegate, Cheryl Bryce, and employee delegate Marcy Brady to attend the annual MERS conference on October 8th, 9th, 2015 with fees and expenses paid by the county.
Support. Motion to second, any discussion on that motion?
Where's the, where's that?
Hawaii.
I just thought of that. And this comes out of the training and mileage fund, so it's already been funded. All I would ask is, I'm doing my thesis on this issue, so if you can bring back all the information, stack it right here. Appreciate it.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Don't care.
Motion to consider authorizing the transfer of the required portion, 50% of the convention facility development funds of the whole liquor tax in the amount of $32,653 from account number 701-000-285.000 to Mid-State Health Network per Section 2 of Public Act 2 of 1986.
Support. Motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Don't care.
Motion to consider sending the millage for veterans relief as provided for by the Public Act 214 Veterans Relief Fund Act in the amount of 0.09 in a mill to be levied December 1st, 2015, and authorize the board chair and county clerk to sign this state tax commission form L-4029.
Support. Motion, a second, we have any discussion? Right now, the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same?
Aye.
Don't care.
Motion to consider approving the medical care facility millage at 2.00 mills, the MSU extension millage at 0.05 mills, and the veterans services program millage at 0.135 mills to be levied December 1st, 2015, and authorize the county clerk and board chair to sign state tax commission form L-4029.
Support. Motion to second, any discussion on that motion?
I just want to mention that there were letters from MSU extension and veterans service program, and we do have Rick Gudonier here from the medical care facility today, should anyone have any questions or if you want to speak to this.
I know we'll be asking for a critical put on the ballot for next year at some point for renewal.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same?
Aye.
Don't care.
Motion to consider approving resolution number 15-09-18.
Support. Motion to second, any discussion on that motion?
This resolution is for the light arm that we spoke about last month, where you will collaborate with the green office, the equalization office, and potentially even more offices to come up with dollars to fix the 7900 by March of next year.
Anything else? Right now, the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Don't care.
Motion to consider approval to act pursuant to the authority granted accounting under Section 8 of Act 152 to exempt Chiwasi County government from the requirements of 2011 Public Act 152 for calendar year 2016.
Support. Motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Don't care.
Motion to consider authorizing the board to hire a director of information technology contingent upon the resignation of the current director at pay grade nine on the rise salary schedule with a salary range of $41,527 through $50,805.
Support. Motion to second, do we have any discussion on this motion?
I had a wonderful meeting about 2 o'clock this afternoon with the RSD Dave, who is director of IT, Royce handles all the IT, gave him my concerns about our 250 users, Boston Computers, court system, things like each year, they seemed very positive, they're gonna put together a recommendation for us based on this information, and they should have it in two or three weeks, and I will present that to the board to see if it is comparable, if the services will do what we needed to do, but it was, they're all on board for collaboration, it was exciting, probably one of the best meetings I've been in this year.
Would you want to make a motion to table this until next month then, to give more information and come back and let us know what direction this board's heading into?
Well, we could certainly do that, we could also improve it and not move it, but I like the idea of table. Oh, we do have a motion on table, yeah, so we.
I would recommend that we okay it, and then have another motion to table it for the time, maybe until we hear back tomorrow. I mean, this gives the process to go ahead and think it back in a week and say, you know, we can't do this, that means we have to wait until October.
And or the prices.
Yeah. You know, the obvious here, so.
Yeah.
Our process will move along, but we're certainly very interested in their process.
I look like we can table or pass it and then table it. No. The motion on table was to pass it, was there a second? Yes. And this is just a discussion.
Why not, we'll just pass it.
Not table one.
Alright. Alright. I was just under this. That's why I was asking, considering. He said, uh, three before. So I asked, they, they asked me how soon do you leave this, and I said yesterday, but I said two weeks, plenty of time.
Or it may take longer to get approved.
They, they, they believe they can do it faster, I said two weeks, but they think they can do it in a week, but I don't want to book them to that timeframe, so if that's something soon, hopefully it's all in one, let's hold this process going on. Just in case it's too high.
Yeah, I mean, I want, if it didn't go in two weeks, I don't want to wait another two to four weeks, and then we're two months off without anybody to fix our stuff, people don't want to be in that position.
I got a feeling this seat will be empty, but that would happen.
No, you didn't agree it.
Yeah. I hate the funeral, the audio.
Anything further? Nothing further, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Don't care.
Uh, you'll complete with that report?
Sure. With my public safety and courts, there's also.
Didn't have anything of note to happen, so it was canceled. End of my report.
To help human services, Commissioner Barnes.
Motion to consider approving agreement between the Chiwasi County Health Department and Memorial Healthcare for the maternal and infant health program with a payment of $75 per visit for the period of October 1st, 2015 through September 30th, 2016, and authorize Larry Johnson Health Director to sign the same.
Support. Motion to second, do we have any discussion on this motion? Can we say it?
Is there any questions on it? Contract we do with Memorial Healthcare Social Work Services for pregnant and nursing moms, make sure they're hitting their benchmarks, we contracted out, they're a good partner, CEO Long here, we do many contracts with them, and we value that partnership, and it's a contract position, so we don't pay any licensing costs.
Any may any questions? Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Don't care.
Motion to consider approving resolution 15-09-19, Chiwasi County Board of Commissioners, authorization to purchase land in the name of the county and determination to erect a medical care facility outside the board.
Motion to second, any discussion?
Explain it to me.
Rick.
My question would be, is it because you're quasi-public under the county that you have to the county approve this?
Yes, it's from Bonnie Toski, the county attorney, she made this determination, legal opinion, that it has to be in the name of the county. So basically, the two agreements that Brian Long typed up have to be, in terms of parties, have to be in the name of the Chiwasi County Department of Health and Human Services and our address, and then the warranty for the land has to be in the name of the county of Chiwasi. Yeah, with our address, for legal, yes. We're gonna pay for the land, of course, but it just has to be, it has to be that way legally because you own us, or you own the operating facilities.
We, they are actually all under our jurisdiction, so they are the property, the medical care facility is the property of Chiwasi County, and the Board of Commissioners is, or they are actually under our direction, but they have their own board, so everything has to stay in the county's name.
Okay, this is for the property, is this for the building?
Not yet, no, it's for the property, and also there's another agreement that basically deals with pre-construction development, like architectural fees with the different phases, you know, design, development, programming, I don't know, Brian, you know, if you want to add anything to that or not.
Oh, that's exactly the two agreements. The first agreement, of course, is for the sale of the actual property and the site development costs associated with that, so the underground utilities, anything, everything to bring the property up to a point ready for actual physical construction, so again, sanitary, storm, the different utilities, estimated roads, walkways, this type of thing, and the actual sale of the real property, deed and type to the county. Second agreement is a, essentially an architectural agreement and design and programming, as Rick has said, it covers first through the preliminary planning of the project, schematic design phase of that project, which is ongoing right now with the facility, so the design of the building, and that would lead up to and including the design development phase, which would put together the remaining planning documents, right up to stamped and engineered prints that would go to the state and to the building coefficient for approval for actual construction. These plans would also be suitable for the presentation through an RFP process to bid that project out. That will take that project up to that.
Got you. Thank you.
I got an email on that, or if that procedure on that.
And again, that's, go back to Bonnie Toski, because basically what happened was back in March, when you purchased it, going to phase two, it was her opinion that it wasn't specific enough, so we had to do this, this resolution today to give us more specific authority to move forward with this, these agreements, we're talking about that.
I guess I got the question, correct me if I'm wrong, and then we'll do another resolution at some point for the building also, and basically as it stands, and correct me again if I'm wrong, Memorial is putting the money up front, the healthcare facility is paying for it, and the county ends up owning it.
Correct? Well, yeah, basically what hap, you're right, it's my understanding is we get further down the line in terms of actually constructing a building, going to that specific agreement that the county commissioners, and it probably has to be signed, to my understanding, by the chair of the county commissioners or the designated, because by statute, any county that has a county nursing home, the board commissioner is responsible for establishing a county nursing home, renovating one, or even dissolving one, so it has to all go through the county commissioners in terms of building the new building and all the things that go along with that. In this, we would be paying for it, we're all, we're looking at lease-to-buy options still with Memorial, but we're also looking at financing still as well.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah, we have to have two options, we have to present.
For our C O N, our certificate of need process, we have to have more than one financing option while we pick one, so.
And then, just for the record of the board here, and then at some point, this board will also be in charge of what we are going to do with the old facility.
That is correct.
So that's, that's something for all the commissioners to keep in mind, there's been negotiations, we, not really negotiations, but discussion points of what this board is going to do with that building, because it's, at some point, you know, we own it and there's liability of dissolving and taking care of it.
There has been dialogue with Gilso, so I guess, as the deed said, it would revert back to the city, there is some question there whether it's the buildings or all the property, as we do have other buildings on that land, there's also been conversations with Mr. Gudonier as well, on what to do with this going forward, but this is the next step in the right direction, and we can use it, find something more definitive on what is going to happen with that building, but I think we can find some agreement with all parties working together.
Basically, what the old quick claim deed said then, I think it was 1952, is that if there were cease to be Pleasantview Hospital, the old name for it, it reverbs back to the city of Corona, so basically at that point, that's why you have to negotiate with them to see who wants to keep and who wants to.
They may not want it, so.
They may not, they might have something already planned for it, and that's conversations we can continuously have with Mr. Sort.
We really don't want it, wait till we.
They don't know at this point.
I, I was recently at tour of your facility, and it was pretty interesting, and I really enjoyed it, I saw your IT room in the basement, tech room, and then previously, we discussed the new generator that was purchased a couple of years ago, that stays too, yeah, and all the stuff that might have gone to the new facility because of, don't want to have downtime and transition problems, everything, everything that you're gonna have in that new building will be what we call up to date stuff.
We may, we may take some of our equipment and furniture with us, but most of it's gonna be new, because anything that the public's going to see in a new building, we're gonna want new fixtures and furniture, so that's gonna be part of our budget, but there may be some things we take, but it'd be more for back parts that the public doesn't see as much of.
And I should say to Mr. Long for what he's doing, collaboration with us and working on a sound view of it.
Well, it's absolutely our pleasure, I think we have an opportunity here to create a more collaborative relationship that frankly has been a long time in coming, we have a medical care facility that is outstanding, provide excellent care to the patients, we believe that working collaboratively with them will provide a better result, and our mission of the community, providing overall confidence in healthcare deliverable, that we have committed to, so I think it's okay to make it for everyone of all.
The entire complex out there, someday it's gonna take that gears down the road, it'll be a total asset to this community, a hundred dollars.
Thank you, please, sir.
Anything else? Thank you. All opposed, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Don't care. Bring on to the chair person.
Commissioner. Big week, exciting week, I hope everyone's taken time to look through the budget, as for other agenda items, Chiwasi County Board of Camper Serves sample valid, Lord Gray presented that earlier this week, make a motion to accept the valid, sample valid, if you will. Yes, look into the motion.
Support.
Support.
Motion to second, do we have any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Don't care.
Consider moving the table discussion regarding the bond process for the Mystic Gate Creek drain.
Will make that motion? For motion to second, any discussion?
I do. I would ask the board commissioners, since we're gonna remove this, that we pledge full faith and credit for $800,000 only.
You're just removing it from the table, you have to vote before you can begin the discussion.
Let me see, the next one, can you see that?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Don't care. And with that, Commissioner Parton.
I'm sorry. Consider approving resolution 15-08-17, its contingent on the previous motion, I would ask the board of commissioners that we pledge full faith and credit for $800,000 only, so that we can pay our debt to our.
Just our portion, though.
Just our portion, which would be.
We have to pledge full faith and credit because $800,000.
Can we get a second first, Paul? We have to put our. Second. Thanks.
I just didn't, I didn't market, thought we could have our portion in there.
No, I just wish I was doing it right, and I apologize. So I would ask this board that we want to pledge full faith and credit for the $800,000 only to pay our debt, noting that Chiwasi County is only responsible for about 40%, and some other items of discussion that we want to talk about, we really, I really just wish that the Mystic Gate board would get things figured out and put a project together, quit wasting money on engineering and all these extra costs, and we need some sort of a project, but we don't need to carry this on, and it would be my hopes that at some point that we would pledge full faith on a project that would be $4 million or less, and that would include engineering costs and everything that we spent to this point.
Are you careful, Larry?
I've been to several of the meetings, and just on what we're in, I'll be, and.
and way down further into the years, legal things that went on, I was competing, you know, because I'm coming with that area and that project, it's been kind of a circle.
Right, and the problem with the motion that I made and how this board supported last month, if we do not go back to this full faith, if we disagree and do not go back to this, there's possibilities of hurting the county's credit rating and several other things.
I had lunch with Mrs. Lee last Thursday, it's Wednesday, or maybe Wednesday, with Mr. Rubin, and we tried to talk her into maybe giving us more time to march. And she is, matter of fact, ready for this to be done. She has pledged more monies to other counties elsewhere, and she is a sharp, astute businesswoman who is giving no ground and will not budge. She said she is prepared to sue us if we do not do this. And she also mentioned that it will lower our credit rating as well as increase our interest rates. So just know that, and she's a wonderful lady, but she is sharp.
And then, once again, I'd like to just remind everyone that, you know, we were, some of the thought behind it is we're still waiting for the legislation to go through that gets the county, so the county as a whole would not be held responsible for the entire debt, and it would just go to the drain district. I don't know, Commissioner, our great Commissioner, Sir Tony, would you like to add anything?
Well, yeah, the capital bill, Ben Gliden is going to introduce it. They sent it over to the lawyers. Yeah, to get it rolled up, and it's going to be a change in the drain code. It shouldn't have never been that way, I don't know why somebody hasn't caught it, helped it out, you know. So that would be in it. And Jeff's right, if we don't pledge our full faith and credit to borrow money from another financial institute to pay Mrs. Lee off, it would not only hurt the county's credit, but it'd hurt the Mystic Gate District's credit also, probably trying to have a borrowed money on a bond issue again, so. And I know that they were asking for nine hundred ninety-five thousand, but I think the important thing is to get eight hundred thousand and pay Mrs. Lee off, so the debt's taken care of. And we'll have eighteen months to figure out what we're going to do up there.
Another eighteen months. And the next Mystic Gate meeting is what?
It's the twenty-ninth of this month, it's a Monday, three o'clock. I'll be counting your phone. Or no, I think it's at nine o'clock, because they moved it up, because it's got to be done by noon. But I'll get you guys a copy to make sure it's confirmed. They haven't sent us a notice yet on it, so.
I would just wish at some point that committee would realize that we're tired of messing around and spending money foolishly, and we'd just like to get a project and get it completed, so we can move on.
Yeah, you do have to get another representative, John Bush, he's got that October first. He should be there.
Thank John for his efforts, he's really loved the charge for it. Hopefully we can find someone just as good as him. But, you know, five years ago, this was an emergency project that had to be done, and five years later, we're still talking about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further?
I'm just, yeah, we're going.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm sorry, could you just repeat the motion that I ended up with? Because I've had it messed up a couple of times, please.
The motion I have is just to consider approving resolution number fifteen oh eight seventeen. If you wanted all that other stuff over there, I thought you were just talking. I realized that you were adding to this motion here.
Which would be the full faith and credit?
Full faith and credit up to, and that to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars, please. I apologize.
All right, full faith and credit up to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred.
And that to exceed.
Does that take care of the interest?
Well, the interest, we can pay for that with the county. The interest is going to be about four hundred dollars, so. Now, this will go on for, this is a question from Lori, it's going to be approved at the next, tomorrow is me, too. Because we got to make sure that, it's got to be a two-thirds vote. We'll make sure, okay, so I don't know if they do an individual vote or not. We'll do a roll call. I'm not going to be here tomorrow night, so. We got to have a two-thirds vote to pass this, it's not a majority.
You just clarify that.
That motion carries. Any other agenda items?
Yeah, I, last month, we commissioners met after the fair meet, and we had a lot of people that had indicated to us that there had been a lot of talk about the pay scale of our veterans director, and that it's been doubled and tripled. And they said a lot of that information came from you guys. But, you know, being, you know, information like that, sometimes people get it wrong, so I'll just ask you, what, did you say anything about our pay for veterans administrator at the fair?
I had a individual, a veteran, asking me what the V A N director was making. And I told him, that's all public record. That's all I told.
So that, okay, we heard all sorts, and we had a lot of people here that were pretty upset that sometimes things get expanded on or whatever. I, we were here last month, so you didn't get a chance to answer.
Yeah, the word is defend myself. Yeah, I heard while I was gone the actions of better part of commissioners from last month. I had a, and I'm really ashamed to be in the same room with a lot of you.
All right, we will move on. If anyone from the public has anything this time, it does the board. If not, this meeting is adjourned.